Thank you for joining us for this Local Decision 2016 Candidate Debate here on North Metro TV. I'm your moderator, Ben Hale. Glad to be joined today by the candidates running for Spring Lake Park City Council. I have Brad Delfts, Bob Nelson, and Barbara Goodbo Bishoff with us. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate your time. There are two other candidates in this race, but they chose not to participate in our debate today. We're going to start today with opening statements. After that, we'll go into a question and answer segment. We'll come out of that and go into an opportunity that the candidates have to ask their opponents a question. And then we'll finish today with closing statements. Brad, you're in the first chair, so you get the first crack at it. You're up with your opening statement.
Hi. Very good. My name is Brad Delfts. I am a candidate for one of the two open positions on the Spring Lake Park City Council. I was born and raised in McHenry, North Dakota, where I attended school and graduated from McHenry High School. I also attended North Dakota State College of Science, where I graduated with a degree in electronics technology. I've been married to my wife Kelly for 37 years. We have four adult children and two grandchildren, all who live in the Twin Cities metro area. Currently, I am an IT manager at Optum, which is one of the divisions of United Health Group. I've lived in Spring Lake Park for 19 years, and I've lived within the bounds of Spring Lake Park School District for over 35 years. Currently, a member of the Spring Lake Park Park and Rec Commission for over 10 years, and many volunteer opportunities within Spring Lake Park.
Thank you for your opening statement. Bob Nelson, you're next with your opening statement.
My name is Bob Nelson. I'm seeking reelection to the Spring Lake Park City Council. I've been on the council first elected since 1999, served as mayor, council member again, seeking reelection. I've been a planning and zoning commissioner. I've been a lifelong resident of Spring Lake Park. I live in the house I was born in. I've lived with my wife Tammy for 37 years. I have five beautiful grandchildren, two sons. It gives no greater pride to work for the residents of Spring Lake Park on behalf of the city and the city council and serve them to the best of my ability. There are many opportunities to meet different people, function with development, and everything in the city that's so great. You know, I've been here my whole life, so I never left, and it's something I hold near and dear to my heart.
Thank you for your opening statement. Barbara, you're up next with your opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Goodbo Bishoff. I have loved Spring Lake Park since I was a child. In 1955, my family moved to the village where horse farms and sand dunes were plenty. The roads were sand and gravel, and nobody locked their doors. A lot has changed since then. In walking around the village, I have heard people complain about the awful condition of Spring Lake, the deteriorated Osburn Bike Path, our sky-high tax assessments, and many more problems. Lack of communication between City Hall and our residents is mostly at fault. Many of these issues have already been addressed, but nobody knows. It is shameful that our tax assessment base is 20 to 22 percent, while Moundsview and Blaine are assessed at 8 percent. This has come about because of lack of communication within Spring Lake -- lack of commercial businesses within Spring Lake Park, and our giant college-like high school campus, and overabundance of large churches that are tax-exempt. Don't get me wrong, schools are great, churches are great. This is the core of any good town. Therefore, I am creating a bill for the 2017--
God see your time for your opening statement. Thank you very much. All right? We'll have plenty of other opportunities to hear from all the candidates. We're going to move now to our question and answer segment. The first question, Bob, you'll be first to answer the first question, talking about the city budget. When it comes to the city budget, how do you prioritize? If something has to be cut, where do you look first? If there's extra money, where do you want to first direct that extra funds to? How do you prioritize for the city budget?
Well, man, that's a good question, Ben. Very complicated, very involved. Public service is our biggest amount of the budget, and in these times, we need a good police department and fire department. There's no doubt about it. Basic services, our water, our snow plowing, everything that allows people to get to and from work, to and from a hospital, to and from a grocery store, keeping the roads maintained, are the top priorities. Making sure that the sewers work good, the water's good to drink, those take top priorities because those are the elements that residents use on a daily basis. After that, the fringes or golden baubles, if you will, the extras, if there's any money left over, they'll get some attention, but the basic services is the focus of what we are designed to provide.
Thank you for your answer. Barbara, you're next on this question. How would you prioritize when it comes to the budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If you needed to allocate additional funds, where would you direct those dollars?
Well, I feel that both our police and firefighters, that's public safety, so that is extremely important, and they're both doing extremely well in SLP. Where I would cut would be our municipal liquor store that has been bleeding us for years with exorbitant salaries, close to 100,000 per manager, and very bad management. We now have someone from Fridley in there for the next six months to try and turn it around. If it doesn't, I think it should be closed and sold. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, this question now for you. How would you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? And if there are additional dollars, where would you want to direct those funds to?
Well, first of all, I think that our infrastructure is very important. Those are the things that people see direct results of, of their tax dollars, the roads, the water, the sewer. We've built a new water treatment plant here several years ago. That was a great addition. We put in curb and gutter on our streets. That was a good addition. We've been fortunate that we coordinate with Moundsview and Blaine with our Spring Lake for our fire department. That is fantastic. And our police, again, I agree with the candidates here that those are our two priorities. If I was to slash or reduce, that's a real tough question, given our tax base, because we don't have a lot of dollars to cut, frankly. So I really don't know what we'd do. I'm more about managing rather than cutting. In other words, taking the dollars that we give in and keeping them in place with our infrastructure and our safety.
Thank you for your answer. After every question, I'll offer a short amount of rebuttal time or response time. Would anyone like to use that after this question? Does not appear so, so we'll move on to the next question. Let's talk about development. Knowing that you cannot always pick and choose what comes your way at City Hall, what in terms of business, new business redevelopment or new development, would you like to see come to Spring Lake Park? Barbara, you are first on this question.
Well, we have had several new developments coming in, a senior center, which I feel is very good. It's going to be over by Condi Park. But then there is something else that is trying to come into our community. It is a high-rise 150-unit rental that would be on Highway 65 just north of our liquor store. And from the developer, he said his target audience is one-family parents. Well, we just had a school bond referendum to the tune of $49.9 million that passed April 26th of this year. I don't want to see another one in two years, so I want to be very careful about, and this land actually would have to be rezoned, it's commercial right now. So I don't want to see something like that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, same question to you now. Knowing that you cannot always pick and choose the development that comes your way at City Hall, what in terms of new business development or redevelopment would you like to see in Spring Lake Park?
One of the things I think we need to do, we need to focus on kind of existing businesses where we have some closed doors, for sale, for lease. We need to do whatever we can to attract existing businesses rather than new builds. Since we're small and closed in, we don't have a lot of empty space for new development. You know, given the example of the spot next to the liquor store, that's basically a swamp right now. It's not very good, and we should be careful as to what we put in there, but I would really like to focus on the infrastructure we have, where we have for sale, for lease businesses, to see what we could do to attract the right businesses in there to keep Spring Lake Park growing.
Thank you for your answer. Bob, this question now to you. Knowing that you cannot always pick and choose the development that comes your way at City Hall, what in terms of new business development or redevelopment would you like to see in Spring Lake Park?
Well, you know, a number of years back, we entered into a joint powers agreement-type thing with the Noka County for EDA, HRA development, and we've gotten some money. We've bought in some land, the Nicolos property, the public, the old Simpson property. We've done that with a vision of eventually having a developer come in and redevelop that would should drive other redevelopment on 65 across from there. Right now, we're currently putting in a 55 and older apartment complex, a Teguni Golf Complex, which is a great amenity, I believe, to the city. As you stated, with not a whole lot of land, we're about 98 percent developed in the city of Spring Lake Park. It's very hard. There's going to be tough decisions about what's going to go in the new development by the liquor store with a new owner of that property.
Thank you. Opportunity for rebuttal time if anyone wants to use it.
I have a question for Barbara, and that is regarding the school bond referendum and how that would be affected by the development north of the liquor store. What's the tie-in, do you feel?
Because if you have 150 rental units, and these are single-family, because we are well-known, Spring Lake Park High School is well-known as a very good school, it's going to be a lot of children. And we have just gone through this referendum, and that means more kids and more money, and it just keeps going and going. And our tax base is 20 to 22 percent. And Blaine is sitting, and Moundsview is sitting over there at less than 8.
That's our time for rebuttal on that one, but thank you for the answer to that question.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you haven't taken your specific rebuttal time yet, so you can do that.
Okay.
If it's about the topic that we were talking about--
No.
Okay, then that will come later.
No.
Okay.
And this is to Bob.
Okay. Well, if it's not on the topic we're talking about right now, we'll get back to the -- you'll have a chance to ask a question later.
No, no, it was what he brought up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, what's the question?
What he was talking about.
What's the question?
I wanted to know what would be considered, what they are considering putting in, the Camstone area.
There are no plans right now. We've got, we've bought up the property, and once it's paid off and the loans are done with the interest-free money from the county, from the EDA funds, that will open it up for developers to come in. It will stay commercial, and we should be able to get some good businesses in there and create a lot of job growth.
Is that that total property, including Latty Lake Inn and that strip?
The whole corner.
The whole thing. Good.
Thanks for clearing that up for us, and let's move on to talking specifically about roads now. Let's see, Brad, you'll be first on this question. What can be done to make streets in your city safe for the residents that live on them and keep them accessible and efficient for drivers?
Well, one of the things that's been done right on my block is that there were stop signs put on the cross streets because of the number of accidents, usually from high school students traveling back and forth by car. That has reduced a lot of the activity, or I think it's made it safer. I think our streets physically are in good shape right now. I think we need to be sort of aware as to where the heavy traffic areas are and make sure that we have stop signs at the proper intersections, things like that. I believe we're in pretty good shape, safe-wise. Our police are also monitoring our heavy-duty streets like Abel and 81st for speeding, and if you've driven on 81st or Abel, you can see that people are driving slower on those streets.
Thank you for your answer. Bob, what can be done to make streets in your city safe for the residents that live on them and efficient and accessible for drivers?
Well, a driver's safety program that the police department has initiated a number of years back. We purchased a mobile speed sign, which is towed and stopped onto the streets and set up in different locations throughout the city. In the last month, we put up two electronic signs on Abel Street in both directions. On University Service Drive, we put in blinking stoplights at the corner of 83rd, and then at the corner of San Berno by North Towne. And they're LED, they're green, they all run that way. And they've got a bunch of LED red lights, and they just blink, 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 and it's amazing to watch the cars slow down. I think in the future, we're going to have to work with the county a little bit on the proposed redesignation of Osborn Road and going down to two lanes instead of the four lanes.
Thank you. Let's go to Barbara with this question now. What can be done to make streets in your city safe for the residents that live on them and keep them accessible and efficient for the drivers?
Well, first of all, I do not believe that the surfacing, the paving that was just completed is very good. I went to City Hall on it, and I live on Monroe, and I was very upset with, and I told them to have the last payment kept back until they redid it, and they did a patch job close to my house. Over on Jackson and Manor Drive, the roads are deteriorating terribly, and I'm not happy about it.
Okay. Rebuttal time, anyone on that question? All right, we'll move on to the next question. Let's talk about, let's talk about, excuse me, priorities or goals that you have. If you want to be on the city council, you want to get stuff done. You're not just going there to go to a bunch of meetings. You want to get stuff done for the city. And so my question on this one is, and Bob will start with you on this question, what is something that you'd like to accomplish for the city?
Well, a lot of it's underway right now with the way we entered into the EDA to attract more businesses. We've got to get more commercial tax rate in here to keep our property taxes for our bedroom community lower. That's one of the highest priorities, which in turn keeps their taxes down. That's a struggle. It's a very hard thing to do, and it's, you're kind of at the mercy of the developers and the market on what you can bring in and how it's going to be accomplished. But with the tools that we've used as a team and the new city administrator we have that is very proficient in this area, we've made some great big leaps and bounces in the last three years, and I'm looking forward to carry it on and get these things going so our residents can live in a community that's safe and reasonable to live in.
Thank you for your answer. Barbara, you're next on this question. What is something that you would like to accomplish if you are elected to the city council?
Well, I'm creating a bill for the 2017 Minnesota Legislature, asking for special funding to ease the tax situation within the building. I've already spoken to the Office of the Secretary of State. I believe the communication between City Hall and the citizens is very poor. We need to have, I would like to have a council member available at City Hall a few times a month for people to come in and express their problems and see if something can be accomplished at that time. And if it can't, put it on the city agenda. And when you're at the council meetings, a lot of people become very intimidated. I think we should have like a roving mic night, so the mic can be in the audience, so people don't even have to get up from their chairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, same question to you. What is something that you would like to accomplish for the city of Spring Lake Park?
Well, again, bringing in the development for commercial sites. I mean, from a residential standpoint, we are pretty much where we are. So anything that we can do for the sites that we have to bring in more commercial tax base is something I would like to be a part of. The other thing I think we should do, I mean, we still have empty houses within the bounds of Spring Lake Park that should have people in them. Spring Lake Park is a well-kept secret almost. It's a wonderful place to live. If there's something we could do from a marketing aspect to market our city to the outside world to say, hey, this is where you should live, this is a community, because of the strong sense of community and multi-generational families that we have, I think people would find it very attractive.
Thank you. Rebuttal time on that question, anyone? Okay, let's move on to talking about a public safety issue. Barbara, you'll be first on this question. It's clear both nationally and locally that there is high tension between segments of the law enforcement community and minority communities. How will you work to create an environment in Spring Lake Park to talk about and address these issues? Barbara, you're first.
Like I said, one of my main issues is lack of communication between City Hall and the residents of Spring Lake Park. We need to get out there, I'm talking the council, Parks and Rec, building, zoning and planning, and let people know what's happening within the village. Talk to people. It's the only way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, same question to you now. How will you work to create an environment in Spring Lake Park to address these issues between parts of our community?
Well, from a public safety standpoint, our citizenry is changing. We have multifamily housing units where we do have, you know, we're not a Lily White community anymore. We have a very diverse background, it's getting more diverse all the time. That's true in our residency, and that's true also of our school. So one of the things we want to do is we want to build programs that are better so we can involve some of these families, because we're not, our programs are dated, and I'm talking from Park and Rec, I'm talking from community service, things like that. So that's one way to reach out. Another way to reach out potentially is through our police and fire departments to make them more visible. We've asked, we've talked about that when we have weekly softball games or events at the park, to have a policeman show up, walk around, and talk.
Thank you. Bob, your chance to answer this question now. How will you work in Spring Lake Park to create an environment to address these issues of tension between parts of our community?
Well, we've been doing that for quite a while now. I'm very proud of my police department and how they do it. This last year's National Night Out with all the police and fire that were out there, it was amazing what the communication our officers had with every ethnic background in the city. They talked, and they worked, and they shook hands, and they discussed different problems. They were there. Our cops do it all the time. And when you see people on the street, I've been on countless ride-alongs, and we make a point to stop when we're at a stop sign and talk to who's on the sidewalk, and do these things and get communication open. And I think that's the key. A lot of it's just getting trust and knowing you're there to help.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone after that question? Okay, next question, and let's see here, Brad, you'll start on this question. Part of being a city council member is you are a face of the city. People know who you are. They expect things from you. How would you be an advocate for Spring Lake Park?
That's a really good question. I would guess I would try to become involved in the events, in some of the external events that the city councils are involved in, some of the cross-city coordination with Fridley, with Blaine, Coon Rapids, some of our local, you know, our local neighbors, if you will, working in whatever programs we can get there to sort of give our face of Spring Lake Park externally. Also, public events where council can become a part of, whether it's a parade or a public event like that, something like that. That's what I foresee.
Thank you. Next question, same question now to Bob. How will you be an advocate for Spring Lake Park?
Well, I've been doing that a long time, Ben. I enjoy going to the football games, talking to the parents while they're in the bleachers. Tower Days is a great thing. National Night's a great thing. Attending the local Noka County elected officials' meetings to make sure all the cities are intertwined and looking at different approaches that other cities are taking. And because of the diversity between all the different cities and how large Noka County is, you get a lot of insight from a lot of other elected officials that are dealing with problems that not necessarily are in your community yet, but might be there, might be formed or start. And you can pick up a lot of wisdom with having all these conversations with these people, getting in touch and talking with your state legislators, going to elected day at the Capitol during session, and meeting with those and what's on the total horizon of Minnesota.
Thank you. Barbara, how would you be an advocate for Spring Lake Park?
Last year was the 50th anniversary of the 1965 tornado that happened on May 6th. Unfortunately, Spring Lake Park did not participate in any recognized event. They were asked by, Fridley put on a gorgeous event, and they had Moundsview there, the gentleman putting it on, Al Taylor, told me when I asked him that City Hall just wasn't interested. Well, we still have 28 percent senior population here in Spring Lake Park. We need to honor these people. We need to do something. It's not right. Our new emblem is the water tower with underneath "history, community, and home." That's all of them together. Honor those people. It's only right.
Thank you for your answer. We're going to move now to the last question that I have for you this evening. This is a question that we're asking in every debate that we do this year. All 17 debates heard this one question. It's the only one that everyone heard. Bob, you'll be first on it. We've already touched on it a little bit tonight. Across America, we're seeing deep divisions between races, ages, religions, socioeconomic classes, and political parties. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and in your own neighborhood? Bob, you're first.
I think a lot of that just comes with communication, with the people that work at the schools, teachers, police officers, EMTs, firemen, above all your neighbors. I walk about two and a half miles a day with my dog, and sometimes that'll take up to three hours because I can't count how many front yards I stop in and talk to the residents that are there. And that's a lot of it. You know, a lot of it's communication, a lot of it's trying to make people understand that people can be different, but they're not necessarily scary. And to break some of these barriers down, it's very hard to achieve, especially if there's a language gap, because nobody can seem to get right on the same page. So you just don't snap your fingers and it's done.
Thank you for your answer. Barbara, same question to you now. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and in your own neighborhood?
Well, it all comes down to communication. We need to get out there and help the people understand. Run newspaper articles in our local paper. Have them know that we're happy they're there, be it whoever it is, whatever ethnic group it is, or even our senior citizens. Some of them, a lot of them, don't feel like Spring Lake Park wants them there any longer, like, you know, go live in a senior center, give up your home to younger people with kids. Well, that's not the right attitude at all. I mean, these people have been there. They stayed through the recession, kept their homes up, and that's your tax base. Don't get rid of it.
Thank you. Brad, same question to you. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and in your own neighborhood?
First of all, I don't mind saying that I have no party affiliation or really affiliation with any type of group that's extreme in any way, shape, or form. I think one of the things we have to do is like both the other candidates have said, I think we need to make ourselves visible. We need to talk to everyone. We need to, one of the things that we've done from a Park and Rec standpoint, from the programs where you bring in kids, if you meet kids, you meet parents. And you meet parents, you can talk to people that are meaningful in your neighborhood, and that's important. And you meet people from all walks of life, from all strata of income, and we need to keep doing that. We need to also encourage our police and firemen to do the same, and as a city councilman, we'll have probably, hopefully, a little more leverage to do that. But that's the way I see us moving forward.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone? Okay, well, that's the end of the questions that I have for-- I have for you today. Now's the opportunity, if you choose, to ask your opponents one question. Brad, you have the first opportunity, if you choose, to ask your two opponents up here on the stage with you a question.
All right, I'm going to ask, well, all of them, one at a time. My question would-
Yeah, yeah, just one question that they'll both answer.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, my question is, how would you feel as an elected city councilperson in increasing our relationship or fostering a better relationship with school District 16? And what, what do you think that could help the city of Spring Lake Park? How do you think that would help the city of Spring Lake Park? Bob, your first answer.
Well, I, I believe we've always worked very well with District 16 on a lot of number of things. We share building spaces for different Park and Rec events, this type of thing. I need, I think that needs to be stronger. But at the end of the day, a lot of it's money, whether it's the school, and they've got to rent it out to this program, or we've already got one room rented out to somebody else. But getting it all to work together, we've had great working relationship through the years. And I've not heard a complaint from a teacher or a parent on how City Hall and the council interacts with the school district.
Thank you for your answer. Barbara, you have an opportunity to answer that question as well.
Well, I feel that there's a complete division between the village and, and our school. And I, I don't like it at all, because when I first came here, when I was a little kid, it was community. Everything was together. In fact, my father was one of the originators of the iconic Park Panther, the Panther. It was for the band booster, the band, the band didn't have uniforms, so the band boosters. My dad created the stuffed toy and a bumper sticker that said, "Spring Lake Park, home of the Park Panthers." I want to go back to that for the unity. I want to, I want to be, I want the community to be the community that it once was. Thank you.
Okay. You have 15 seconds to respond, if you want, Brad.
Only response I have is that, having lived in the, within the bounds of District 16 for, like I said, over 35 years, I think that it has broken down somewhat in maybe the last 10 years. And I think we all need to do whatever we can to make it stronger. I mean, I don't really disagree with what either candidate said. I just believe that we need to continue to make it stronger.
Thank you. Bob, you have an opportunity, if you choose, to ask your two opponents a question that they would answer.
Oh, that's a hard one. Being in office, or being the way I am and been through budgets, but what are your major goals to try to control spending in the city to keep property taxes lower?
Barbara, your first answer.
Forget about rezoning commercial space. That's it in a nutshell. Because if you do that, you lose a tax base of 3% to 3.5%. And that's wrong.
Okay. Brad, you-
If you ask that question again, Bob.
What would be your goals and how you can try to keep property taxes down?
That's a really tough question. And it's a really good question. Again, just to keep, everything we can do to bring in more commercial, and getting rid of commercial, obviously, like Barbara said, is not a good idea. But we need to keep continuing fostering what we can do with the commercial areas and the existing commercial, any potential new commercial area we have, so we have a little more, little more meat on the budget to manage.
Thank you. Bob, you do have a chance to respond, if you choose.
I don't have any response. Both good answers.
Okay, thank you. Barbara, you now have a chance to ask one question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Who do I ask?
They'll both answer it.
Okay. How do you feel about the proposed 150 rental unit high-rise, high-rise under consideration at City Hall now?
Brad, you're first.
Well, I see it, it's a mixed, it's a mixed opportunity, first of all. Since we will be using land that's sitting idle right now, it'll be a way to use the land. I don't have as much concern about bringing in too many children for the school district, because with children in a school district also comes funding from the state. So it's not like it's going to be a drain on our economy. It's not like it's going to be a drain on the school referendum. The referendum that was passed in June was to build a new school in Blaine. And I suppose people could say, well, that's wrong. Well, that's where, school District 16 covers Fridley, Spring Lake Park, and, or all of Spring Lake Park, parts of Fridley and Blaine. So we have to, from a school standpoint, that has to be managed. So that's different from the city standpoint.
Thank you. Bob, you have a chance now to respond to that question as well.
Concerning the property north of the liquor store on Highway 65, I was at the meeting when the developer came the first time, and I told him I wouldn't hold any punches, and I was not in favor of going to R3, and I wanted to keep it commercial. And I stood, I said that very firmly, and I meant it. I would like to see more commercial development coming in, more jobs coming there. It's a higher tax base. This would be better for the community. It's the last major piece of land that Spring Lake Park owns on a material highway. And it's very important for that location to stay commercial, for those businesses to survive, because they would have the amount of traffic going up and down the highway every day to be seen and be a success and not fail.
Thank you. You have 15 seconds, Barbara, if you choose to respond.
Well, I totally agree with you, Bob. I want that to stay commercial.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
To stay commercial, absolutely.
Okay. We're going to go now to, I'm sorry, you have about five more seconds, if you have any-
And I disagree, because the developer actually said it will be basically single-family coming in with kids. It's going to be a lot more kids here.
Your time's up.
And the taxpayers are going to get it.
Thank you very much for your, for your response. We're going to move on now to closing statements. That's how we'll finish our debate today. Brad, you're first with your closing statement.
I'd just like to say that my reason for running for city council is sort of an extension of my time that I've spent on the Spring Lake Park, Park and Rec Commission, as my time spent volunteering in the different programs within the city, within the bounds of the city of Spring Lake Park, and to also continue to foster the feeling of community in Spring Lake Park. I think everybody here feels strong about that. Everybody here, Bob being multi-generational barber with her history, that's part of what I want to sort of keep alive in any way that I can, because Spring Lake Park does, and it still does, have somewhat of a small-town feel. Maybe not what it used to, but very few cities do these days. So I would like to, that's where I stand on that, and that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you for your closing statement. Bob, you're up next for your closing statement.
Well, I'm seeking reelection tonight, I guess, because I, well, I got elected '99 the first time, 1999, and I've publicly served the city since then with the different positions that I've had. And it's been a great honor, and they're great people, and there's a lot of work to do. I've had a lot of experience now. I know who to contact, where to go, how to get the ball rolling, different contacts that I've made throughout the years. I will continue to work diligently if I am reelected, and I could never have been prouder in my life to serve the city of Spring Lake Park.
Thank you. Barbara, your closing statement.
I believe in my small community, and I want it to remain strong and beautiful. I know I have a lot to learn in this job, which I wish to take on, but I'd rather, but I would rather be, but I'm going to be the one that's going to be listening. Thank you.
Thank you for your closing statement. I want to thank you all for taking time today to come in and share with us your views and opinions on various issues. So thank you for doing that today.
Thank you.
I want to remind you that you can always head to northmetrotv.com for complete local decision election coverage. It's all there for you. We have biographies from candidates all across the county, as well as more debates like this one. They're all there for you on northmetrotv.com. Those are all the races that we'll be following right up to Election Day. And then remember to tune in on Election Night to North Metro TV for complete local coverage. We'll be the only ones with in-depth analysis of your local elections, so be sure to tune in and watch that. For the candidates, Brad Delfts, Bob Nelson, Barbara Gubbo Bischoff for Spring Lake Park City Council. I've been your moderator, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching.